All right, well, Amit, why don't you go ahead and kick us off?
So today I work on like get user time zone uh inside the message. So we are returning message created date in UTC format earlier. So but like we talk about it and so we started returning message created date in user local time format. So I work on that part today and created the pull requested for it. So a few minutes before I had call with Jerry, so we need to add ready there also, so I have added it just now, so I'm committing that code. Okay.
Okay.
Did you understand what I said, Danny?
Yeah, I did. Um, what do you have to work on next?
Ah, so like Todd, I'm waiting for Todd. Todd, can you please send me like yesterday you told me something you will send me today?
Oh, yeah, I was hoping to. I was discussing this with Danny. We have a bit more to do with the notifications, Danny. Um, Amit is just waiting on us to provide any changes to the messaging or the um timeframes of the of the notification, so we're not there yet, Amit.
Okay. So if something will be clear today, you send it to me, so tonight I will work on it. Otherwise, I will work on the test cases.
Yeah, no problem. Realistically, I don't I don't know that we'll have much for you um this week on the notifications, but if we do, I'll let you know.
We might though, because I was looking at them yeah uh last night and there aren't that many of them that are just like automatic. Um, most of them are, most of the triggers are action based, and so I think we can start by listing out the ones that are are time based, like two and a half hours after you onboard, you get one for entertainment notification. So let's let's start uh when we look at it, Todd, with the the ones that are time based. See if we can make those a little bit better and then we can take a closer look at action based and then ideally over time, we get more personalized with some of them based on what the users experience is like and that that'll be a little bit tricky, but um yeah, I'm saying all this because Amit, we might we might be able to at least have some stuff for you over the next day or two.
If Jerry will Jerry will have some task for me, so he can also send to me, so no problem.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
All right. And Amit, how how far are you with the test cases?
Test cases will be go long and any like, yeah.
Okay. Are some of them already active?
Yes, yes.
Are we getting value out of those test cases already?
Yeah, I think yes.
Can you, I'm sorry, can you give me an example of like how how these test cases work and?
Yeah, I will. I will give you demo.
Okay.
Tomorrow I will give you demo.
Okay, so sounds good. I'd just like to learn a little bit more about it, because I know it's valuable. We've talked about it for a long time, but I'm not a hundred percent clear on exactly how it works. I'm about to learn more. Cool. All right. Jerry.
Yep, so um yesterday, following stand up, I had a uh work session with Amin. We tested all the fingerprinting and the referral stuff on iOS and Android. Validated the multiple cases that you can have, so that looks to be good to go, just pending a release with the code supported. After that, I think that was yesterday, um was it yesterday I did this? Um. Yeah, yesterday I ended up just resubmitting the Facebook application, Danny. And um I know you already reached out to me on that. I went ahead and also, what I will try to do today is I'm going to try to catch up all of the development code into production. I know there are some stuff that I cherry picked over, but uh I'm going to do a dip between the production and development branch and make sure everything's called up today. Um, as far as like maybe any edge cases, uh feature wise, we should be caught up. There might be some edge cases that just have a very small difference. Um, also, uh Todd, have you had the chance to check out your dashboards?
I have, and they look great. Thank you.
Okay, um, I have another question, though. How common is the payment case of somebody having a weekly fixed payment? Like, how how many? Like, should should we create a feature? Is it worth my time to create a feature to where we set people up on a weekly schedule rather than what we're doing right now?
Um, I don't I don't think so. We just pay that one um influencer um or promoter fifty bucks a week. Um, I don't have anyone else that we're doing that with at all.
Okay, so so it's not it's not worth my time to create this in the dashboard. We're just gonna have to hand, we'll we'll just have to handle it one part. What I might do is I might create a button for like a manual payment.
Sure.
Um, since she's on a fixed rate.
Yeah.
Not something that does the whole scheduling.
Right, and then I can just release the payment when I've confirmed the workers done, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I think that's fine for now. If if we think we're gonna have some more promoters like this, I'll let you know, but right now it's it's just the one.
Got it, okay. Yep. And just, I know I've been working with John very closely on this, uh just reporting on the invites situation. I mean, we're getting clicks. I I would really like to see what happens once we uh once we maybe have some partners. Oh, there we go, cool. Just got the change from Amit. Uh, once we have our partners like in South Africa start testing it again, we'll get more data out of it. But right now, the data is pretty consistent with that as it's been that for some reason, people are just not clicking through, which uh after all of our testing, I don't think it's a technical problem, but uh we'll find out there. Uh, something I'd like to do today is I want to update our landing pages to work with the um to to work better when you're outside the country, like have the country code auto select, have the um uh and have the phone number format properly. Uh, outside of that, I saw a couple areas on Sentry that maybe it it I just see a query maybe that I want to sanity check with like maybe recent check ins. Uh, just a sanity check that to make sure that it's not running excessively, so it's just a very edge case. That's the only one I saw of uh of concern. Um. I think outside of that, that would be the rest of my updates and I will get to reviewing Amit's PR.
Okay, great. One other thing I think I might want to have you take a look at if you get some time is uh maybe syncing up with Chantel and uh getting us to a place and and maybe we have to pass this Facebook review first. Actually, that's really just for WhatsApp business. Um, I'd like our app
to sync to our Facebook uh ads manager in a way that allows us to run install driven campaigns and and track the cost per install, because right now we can only run link based campaigns. Um, I need the app app ID connected and there's something there's some kind of connection to the Facebook SDK that's required in order to attribute the install when it comes in from a Facebook ad, and it would be extremely valuable to know what we're paying for these installs, so we can decide if we want to scale it up, because we are getting link clicks on Facebook ads um at about seventy five cents per click. We're getting United States users and those users are landing in the app um pretty effectively, and I think we can tweak messaging and optimize that quite a bit and and bring more US users in for a pretty solid cost per install, but I don't want to do it until I have better tracking.
Mm hmm. Got it. Um, you reminded me of one last thing, though, Danny. Um, for have have y'all heard back from Harvin about the follow up messages?
Hogg emailed him yesterday, but I don't know if he's heard back yet.
Okay, I didn't get anything yet. It just uh
Yeah, no, we have not heard back from Harvin just yet.
We'll bug him again today, though. Cool. You have your hand up, Amit?
Uh, yes, Danny. Danny, actually, I want to talk to you regarding one of my friend has fifty, more than fifty followers on Instagram. And he is ready to put our app, so can please give me some content, so I will send it to him. He will post it on free of cost.
Um, yeah. Yeah, we can do that. Will you send me his Instagram handle?
Yeah, yeah, I will send it to you. Yeah.
Okay, and is your friend in the app yet?
No, he's not in the app, uh so I will add him in the app.
Yeah, do you think we could uh maybe get him in like the uh Live India chat?
Uh, yes, yes. Yep.
Okay.
I will add him.
Okay, I'll I'll uh Todd and I'll talk to you on Slack about it a little bit more.
Okay.
I think I think for it to work, uh we would need to um maybe get him in the Live India chat a little bit. I don't know if he he likes to talk to his followers or not. Um, I'll I'll check out his page and follow up with you.
Okay, okay.
Great, thank you, Amit. Okay, um.
And uh Danny, I want to drop for fifteen to thirty minutes, so I have to go for dinner.
Okay, does anyone need anything for Amit right now before he drops?
Uh, I'm just gonna leave him some comments on the PR, just some things I'm finding.
All right, very cool. Um, let's go go ahead, Amit. Let's go to Ismail.
Thank you.
Okay, so um just kind of made some cleanups on yesterday's PR. Um, so it's it pretty much functions the same. I just cleaned up the code a little bit and um submitted it. Uh, after that, uh, I mean, did you you still didn't work on the um the the app and the null problem where with with the splash screen, right?
It is.
You did, or you did? Oh, okay, okay, because I was planning, I was gonna say if you were to do something else, I was gonna start on that today. Um, if not, then I'm
On it's on the PR that's yesterday.
Um. Oh, yeah, 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 that's right, the fingerprint one. Okay, 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 that's right. Okay. Um, that being said, uh, yeah, I I could take on new tasks if there's anything pending. Um, and did you guys get to test ninety two? Was there any problems, any any errors?
I've been testing ninety two on iOS and I never ran into any problems, but um I could probably get more thorough in my testing, like creating groups and I profiled it, like, what 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 do you think the focus of the testing should be?
So it's tricky because it's like everywhere. Uh, I mean, I mean, it can give you specifics on his PR. Mine is just really the whole app, like everything should just work. Because it's he's everywhere that I mean, even more details.
But more like the the onboard, you should go into the onboard more. And before at some point, to to onboard and the app flash, for you like, not the app flash, but the home screen is just not loading any like we there's like a lot of work we did that is related to with the authentication.
Okay, some more onboarding testing.
Nice, man.
Yeah, so if you find any APIs not working, any white screens, and then if you onboard, close the app, reopen it, stuff like that.
That reminds me, I got a
Or onboard midway, exit, continue onboarding, stuff like that. Yeah, what did you get?
Uh, had, I did actually find a problem. Actually, a user reported it to me. Let me see if it's still one. Um. Yeah, our games API is not uh working when you search.
Oh, okay.
Okay. That's something I could check into as well.
We're pushing something right now to the backend QA.
Uh, shouldn't be.
Yeah, uh, this is just big slow.
I think my knowledge, um. There's a, I go to entertainment.
We'll we'll run through onboarding on some test devices today, though, because that's uh that's something I did not do. I know John said on this version to not delete and reinstall, um just update ninety two over the last build I had on my phone, so I did that and uh haven't been through onboarding yet, so.
Okay.
What was our reason for updating over the top of it?
Uh, because we're using a different system. It's supposed to migrate from the new, from the old to the new. So like, the APIs that you use and the information you're getting, we're doing it a different way. So if you onboard, you you would be writing to the new um method, which would work, but we want to see for users who already logged in and update the app if it migrates properly without them logging out and the app still works.
Okay, so am I safe to like log out and go through onboarding now? Everything does work for me on the surface. Um, so should I go ahead and log out and go through onboarding?
Yeah, it's it's a good idea for better testing and um, yeah, so yeah. I was gonna say, I uh we want to test this really well, because if there's problem, this would pretty much affect everyone in the app. Uh, so it would be bad if anything slips through.
All right, Todd, let's uh let's fire up test devices today and go through onboarding a few times.
You gotta try to like do one step, close the app, continue, close the app, continue, you know what I mean, like um, like test it to the max, like try to break it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good to know. Um. Something else that crossed my mind, I'm trying to remember what it was, oh, it'll come back to me. Anything else, Ismail?
Um, no, not not at the moment. That's just like I said, if there's any also anything pending, I can I can take a look.
Okay. All right, well, then, Amin, thank you, Ismail.
Well, yeah, um, as Jerry says, I'm oh, yeah, it's done, yeah. To test the fingerprinting stuff, so I can invite. Um, but just to correct, Jerry, like most of the things we did was iOS, because there's always this down iOS. Yeah, we there's it is use cases we talk of, use we go through. Uh, there's some issues we fixed in the session, but for Android, we we don't have a way we need to this that. It's only we're gonna do a bill, if you like, just the bill. And then you can just um, yeah, um, after that, I will users come to his reason he calls the app, we should be seeing one, like whatever it is.
Your voice is muffled, I mean, barely hear, I don't know if it's just me or
No, it is muffled. I've just been reading the captions, but yeah, it is muffled a little bit.
Okay, um.
No, not quite. Try try again.
Um, is it good now?
Yes.
Um, but yeah, um, for zero, I was working on issue on onboarding and it's okay. Basically, just to save um the user state of whatever he was doing on the SOT step. If he caused his the app and when the app opened into his tool, whatever he was doing, so, um, yeah, so that's that's almost there. Didn't finish there. Um, I just don't want to break anything related there, because uh that SOT step, it's um it it does like kind of work with the prior steps where users will follow. It it pops up in his uh SOT, so I'm just making sure uh everything's in place. And uh introducing the operation, but yeah, that PR is so or uh almost there. And um Ismail, regarding the PR that I did, I saw your message to merge it with them. I would not do that, um, because my PR was based on like the old dev before having your like your PR merged with it, so the merge complexity might be weird and there might be versions and stuff that will, it's not gonna even appear in the merge comments. Um, so, yeah, we can leave on that PR. Um, till your PR is married, and if we need to test it, we can do a bill out of my PR.
Hmm, okay, yeah, that's that's fine. Uh, it's just, I don't know. About that PR that we had, that, you know, about my PR, I'm just, um, I don't know when we're gonna merge it, because I mean, obviously, it's just a little, you know. Um, it touches a lot of files, so if anything breaks, it's gonna be very, very hard to revert.
Um.
That's why I want to keep it separate, at least for like maybe the first few days of publishing the app. You know what I mean?
Mm hmm.
Or maybe we create a back, like a development backup um that we keep that we we keep it maintained, and then we can delete that backup after everything is smooth or or something like, you know what I mean?
Yeah, I do, um. Well. Um. Like the, what I'm thinking of, like now I can do like the safest way that I can do is like we create the PR by like basing it from your PR. Uh, it is gonna require from me a little bit for copy paste the code, you know? But that's like the safest way to, I I'm thinking of. Um. Well, in like I I'll try to merge your PR with mine, and if there are no merge merge conflicts, that's that's good. But if there is any, then I'll I'll create another PR based from your PR and copy paste that copy and paste the code to this new PR.
Okay, okay.
Um, so yeah, uh today I'll be finishing the uh SOT issue that I'm working on. And also I'll be working on the OT update. Um, I remember like two days, three days ago, John told me that uh we want like kind of banner, so when there's like an update, an OT update, they want to uh let the user know about it, so he can press a button to to apply that P. So but yeah, I I work on the business logic of it. Once the UI ready, we can just connect the two. Um, yeah, this is all for me.
Thank you, Amin. Uh, Ismail, you on the same page? I definitely don't want to do anything that's hard to revert.
Yeah, yeah, I know, we're just, you want to, the whole thing is like, the whole idea is to keep that branch separate. Just in case, in case something happens, um you know, we'll be able to easily revert it and so I want to keep our current development up to date with all our other code. Like, for example, right now, Amin's branch, it should be merged with the development and it should be merged to my branch, so that they're both um, they're both uh um, in sync, and therefore, if you want to revert my changes, we have the other one ready to go. And I will, and it's it's up to date with all the changes that we've been doing, so that's kind of the goal here. So we have two branches to maintain at the moment, so we confirm it's it's working as expected. Um, also, Jerry, for the API I sent you, um it's uh it's returning an empty RA, so it's not an error, it's it's two hundred.
Right, well, the API is probably returning an error. It's just like like handling gracefully and returning empty.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is it's not throwing an error on the front, like on my end, so yeah, but yeah, that's that's pretty much it on
Mm hmm.
Example there. But yeah, Danny, so yeah, the the goal is just to keep two separate branches until until the other one is is stable, like maybe a week after or a few days to a week after the we release it. If everybody's having a smooth onboarding, smooth transition, then we can go ahead and merge it with that.
Okay. Very good. Um, something I wanted to bring up while we're all here, uh, you know, Wells is not with us right now. I mean, it's possible we'll have him jump in on some amplitude analytics at some point in the future. I'm a little concerned that over time, some of the integrations he has with uh amplitude events could break as we make changes. Um. But what kind of API key exposure do we have uh from, you know, him having access to everything? We probably haven't made any changes to those and if so, should we?
Um, I would, I mean, I would say I definitely would um, probably make sure on GitHub, he doesn't have access to push.
I've removed him from GitHub for now.
Oh, he's removed from GitHub, okay. Um. And I know one time he was asking for access like the database and stuff, that that wasn't granted, was it?
I never gave him database access.
Okay, yeah, what else? Um, amplitude keys and stuff like that, does he have access to those?
He's probably, I would say he probably does have access to the keys, but not the login.
The keys and the login, okay. Um, yeah, I don't know how much of a concern that is, but yeah, there's there's that amplitude key and let's see what else we can have access to, um. I mean, he would probably have some access to our variables that we have. Did he ever have access to the backend repository?
No.
Never, are you sure? So he has, he's it's not possible for him to have a clone of it, just because
His IP address isn't even like, yeah, his IP address isn't whitelisted to access the database too, so.
Well, not not just the database, but also if he had, if he has like a backend clone, he can have access to, you know, keys like that you guys have in your environment.
Yeah, I I never gave him an environment variable. Let's see, I'm checking, I'm just double checking. No, I know, I never gave him environment variables to the backend. Now, if he had access to a repo, he'd have access to the repo, but not the environment variables.
Okay, so no secrets.
Right. And he never had AWS access, to my knowledge, so maybe we should check that real quick, but to my knowledge, he never had AWS access.
Yeah, will you double check? I don't think so either, though.
But I think the only thing he has, he has that amplitude key, which shouldn't be too bad.
Okay, I don't think he's gonna be a bad actor or anything like that. I think that uh risk is very low, but you know, we've had it happen before where like the Twilio key leaks out and charges get run up and
No, with these kind of things, it's always better safe than sorry, no matter who it is on the team, like
Agreed.
No matter who it is, it doesn't matter, of course. You always want to be prepared.
Agreed, hundred percent. Cool.
Yeah, there was no access in a he doesn't have access to AWS.
Jerry, what do you think is causing the games API not to deliver the search results?
I'll check, I'm checking the logs.
Okay.
It shouldn't be a hard fix.
What do we use for games again?
It it's a API of Twitch.
Okay.
Um, the good news is it looks like it's on the backend, Danny, so if he fixes it, you don't have to update to get it fixed.
Yeah, yeah, that's good news. Okay, um, well, does everyone have something to work on next? This is where I uh, you know, be not being a part of stand up every day, all day is a little difficult for me. I don't know exactly what to what to keep everybody busy on, but everybody here is pretty self sufficient, so um. Does everyone feel like they have next steps in order uh to hold them over at least until John can return?
Uh, yeah, I for me, um, I just wanna tell, I mean, if if you have anything left that I can take off your plate, send in my way, because I um, I want you to have more time to work on the um new architecture, because there there are some features depending on that. So if there's anything that I can do, just send it my way, so you can have So if there's anything that I can do, just send it my way so you can have more time to refine the architecture.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking about that, um, this, we need that, I'll do stuff to work with. Um, not really, I saw, as I was saying, I have one that I've been working on, it's almost done with it. There's the other one with the OTA. Um, I don't think it's, um, it's like a high priority right now, but it will be once we add the new architecture, because like we want like a safe way. To work back up needs, if anything, but. Um, but yeah.
Okay, sounds good. Yeah, like I said, if anything.
Okay, um. Anything else you can think of, Jerry?
Uh, in regards to access?
Uh, no, like if uh, if John was here, what's something he might want everybody to continue working on right now based on last couple days of uh, stand-up?
So, yeah, new architecture, definitely, because seems like that we're running into a lot of things that is like. It'll be resolved if we go to the new architecture, you know, something like that. Um. For Amit, yeah, it would be notifications. Sounds like Todd is like, I guess Todd, you and Todd are working on something, so you can't meet with Amit on that. Um. For me, it would be the invites, checking the invites, getting the data, seeing what, what it is, but um, you know, we've kind of. Drifted off the invites. I think John has another plan that he's gonna try to execute. Um. And testing to make sure that people are not getting logged out, because that, that's major bug.
Okay. Yeah, that is a major bug. Um. How can we test that, like? Effectively, that one is tricky because I don't, have you guys picked up any clues as to what might be causing it?
Um. Uh, picked up any clues? Uh, that would be part of this build with the, of the Jotai Atom. That is to what I believe to be what's causing it, or from what Ismail said. And it's just testing it out, making sure that you can use the app normally with the Atom. And it's found out. Is that correct, Ismail?
I was, I was gonna say like, you should not be unexpectedly uh, kicked out of the app, like just like this build, it's all about fixing this.
Correct.
So.
Yeah, so uh, basically, if you ever open the app and you just have like a empty lobby. And none of the APIs are loading, that's a warning that, um, we're trying to avoid, or that's a problem that we're worried about, that we're trying to, hopefully doesn't happen.
Yeah, one thing I have seen happen is uh, I get that uh, that internet connection error even when I'm, you know, clearly on wifi, uh, that's still happening a little bit.
Yeah, I'm gonna take another look at that. John, John didn't mention that yesterday. Um, so. I thought I added like a seven second delay, but I'll also give it another look today since I have some extra time. Uh, see if I can find any better solutions.
Okay, that'd be helpful. And then uh, I, I did get us an extension on Android for that, uh, you know, sixteen kilobyte. Um, thing, the error that was popping up in the Google Play Console. Um, is that something the new architecture is gonna address?
Hmm, not sure. I think, I mean, you were, you worked on that, is. Do you know if the new architecture would, would fix the Android warning?
Yeah, um, not the new, I think that was just.
Okay, we've got a few months, but uh, I don't think they'll give us another extension, so it's just something we gotta take care of before that rolls around. Alright. Todd, uh. Is there anything you can think of to, to add here?
Um, not at the moment. Um. I think the. Just one of the main things we should catch up on is the notification soon. Um, still testing the version ninety-two in Android, Chantel is as well. Um. Yeah, no, that's it. I'll, I'll report uh, Ismail or any issues I might have with ninety-two. I'll have Chantel do that as well, but that's about it.
Cool, let's do, uh, let's start by testing as much as we can on ILS through onboarding and, and Google, uh, and Android. For as many devices as we can and then after that, we'll dive into notifications and.
Okay.
I'm sure we'll have a, a dozen other things to, to work on today, but um, I don't want to be the bottleneck for if ninety-two gets approved. I want to be able to release it if it's good to go and it sounds like it's pretty major problem if uh, if there are any problems in onboarding right now, so.
Right.
We'll have to be thorough.
Sounds good.
All right, cool, cool. Um, all right, well, obviously. We're all connected on Slack. If you guys need anything from each other, just feel free to jump in here at any time and uh. Network together.
Sounds, sounds good.
Cool. All right, guys, have a good day. I'll be on Slack if anyone needs me.
All right.
All right.
I'll take care.
Thanks, Alan.
Thank you.
Hey, bye.
Bye.